And we're also going to record here. So hey, 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 I hope you all are doing well. Please forgive me for the delay. All right. PJ one is tired and I thank the Lord for PJ two reminded me that hey, we should be live right now. But we honor the Lord for what it is he is going to say tonight because he gonna say something. It's really, really, really amazing. And I pray that it will encourage your heart and bless your spirit. As we go ahead and share what it is the Lord has instructed me to share. I know we are still in our study of the parables. We just gonna get to them when we get to them. Right? When he speaks, we listen and we do what it is he is asking us to do. And so one of the things that I believe very strongly tonight is that the Lord wants to encourage his people, that he wants to encourage the bride. And I believe that that is absolutely necessary for where we are in this, in the body of Christ, right? Not just because of the election or anything like that, but because there are so many things happening. Life is happening to each and every one of us. And because life is happening, I believe that it is our job as vessels of the Lord to put our mouths to God's ear and to release what it is he is saying to his people. All right? So that's what we're going to do tonight. Earlier today, I was getting dressed to get ready for my day. And the Lord began to quote the scripture to me, "Oh death, where is your sting?" Right? I started hearing that. I know, I know, I know. We going somewhere. It's the head shaking for me. He began to quote that scripture to me and we're going to read that. We're going to connect some scriptures and we're going to make this thing plain, as plain as possible, as plainly as we can in the Holy Ghost. But if you're with me, hey y'all, to those of you all who are watching on Facebook Live, I hope you all are having an amazing Thursday night. I hope your week up to this point has been great. My name is Pastor Justin Ruffin. This is Refuge City Ministries Bible Study. We gonna do what we can. We gonna do what we can, but I do believe that the Lord wants to encourage his people tonight. And so if you're watching on, on live, I want you to type in the comments, "The jar of victory." All right? J A R, the jar of victory. And I promise you, we're going somewhere. So let's pray. And then we'll dive into the word and then we'll make this thing work the way that we know how to do it. All right? So Father, in the name of the Lord Jesus, we thank you. Woo, yeah, I feel you already. We honor you and we give your name praise and glory because you are good and because you are God. Now, Father, this is your word and these are your people. So Father, I do decree and declare by the power and by the spirit of you that you're going to feed us as you always do, that you are going to lead us and guide us into the ways of all truth and that you are going to allow your people to receive of you exactly what they need. I thank you, Father, that you know their needs better than I do. You know where we are and you know our location. You know what it is that we are desiring of you. So Father, our prayer tonight is that you feed us, that you teach us, that you meet us where we are and that you challenge us out of this place and into another. And we give you praise in Jesus' name. Amen and amen. All right? Here's your Thursday tidbit. I want to share this with you all just very briefly. It has something to do with the word, but then again, it may not have anything to do with the word. But this is what he said to me. One of the things that we have been praying a lot is, Lord, take us higher and Lord, take us deeper. All right? Now, one of the things that typically happens when we start praying both higher and deeper is that we think that God is stretching us, right? That he is both elevating us, but that he is also deepening our roots, that he is also anchoring us in a new way. And while that is true, while that is one aspect of it, I also want us to think of it, excuse me, from this way and in this manner, that a lot of times when the Lord is taking us deeper, he is not taking us lower. He is not stretching us or anchoring us, but he is taking us further into. And so when we say, "God, take us deeper," he may be taking you deeper into the fire. I know. He may be taking you deeper into the furnace. He may be taking you deeper into trial and into challenge so that you can learn something about him, right? If we were at a cave or if we were at the beginning of a forest or even water, we were on a cruise a couple of weeks ago. It was amazing. We had an awesome time with my family. But if you are standing on the shore and you begin to say, "I want to go deeper," you're not going to dig in the sand until you get deeper. You are going to walk forward into the water until you find yourself standing in deep places. And one of the things that I believe is that many of you have been saying, "The Lord is not hearing me" and that the Lord is not answering my prayer because you've been saying, "Lord, take me deeper," thinking that he was going to anchor you. But he's been saying, "I'm taking you deeper, but I'm pushing you forward and further into." Why? So that you can know what it is to flow with me, so that you can know what it is to live in the place of the water and not be overtaken. Why? So that you can know what it is for the Lord to come through and manifest the promises that he made to you. And so you've been saying, "Lord, I want to go deeper. I want to go deeper," because you've been trying to... Lord Jesus, you've been trying to feel stable, but he's been trying to take you deeper so that you can recognize that he is the God of stability. I know, I know, I know. You want to feel solid. You want to feel anchored. You want to feel like I know what's going on, like I have sure footing. But the reality is, is that when you say, "Lord, take me deeper," he may just do you like he did. The prophet, when he said, "He measured out a little bit and then he said, 'Come on out this way.'" I believe it was Ezekiel. Then he measured out a little bit more and I was ankle deep and then I was knee deep and then I was waist deep. I was, I was, it was too deep for me to swim in, but it was also too deep for me to be... I just found myself all the way submerged. Why? Because he called me deeper. I'd have got excited. We ain't even been here that long. One of the things that I believe, and we've said this before, but I believe that the Lord wants to remind somebody is that he is calling you from the safety of the shore into the safety of the deep. Woo! He is calling you from the safety of the shore into the safety of the deep place. Why? Because there are certain things that happen on the shore that will never happen in the deep. There are certain conversations that happen on the shore that will never happen in the deep. They're not permitted in the deep. Woo! There are certain attacks that you might experience on the shore that you will never experience in the deep. Why? Because they're not permitted. The deep is a place where God has to protect you. The deep is a place where God has to do what he promised that he would do. The deep is a place where he bids you to come. Woo! And then he says, "If you need to walk on water, then that's what you will do." But you cannot do this. Why? Because the shore holds you up and, or on the shore, you're held up on the sand. So when God does it, you don't know if you're standing or not. You don't know if it's God's power or not because you are stuck on the shore. But when you are standing in the middle of the ocean, you know for a fact that it is God that is keeping me. Woo! When you are hell, when you are neck deep in trouble, when you are going through hell and high water, you know for a fact that it is God who is protecting me. Woo! He calls both of them safe. Hey y'all, how y'all doing? Hey, Shal Devoy, good to see you. Hey, Sherman, good to see you. Hey, Minister Rochelle, good to see you. Oh, Prophet, it's Rochelle. Good to see you. Hope you all are doing well. Buddy says, "I need you to come deeper with me." I need you to come deeper with me so that you can recognize just how safe you are. Now, what does that have to do with the jar victory? I'm glad you asked. We gonna make this thing plain and we gonna do what we can as much as we can. 1 Corinthians, chapter 15. Now, I know this is not a funeral because this is typically where we read this, right? Right? This is the scripture that we read when we know it was a saint. They were a preacher. They were a pastor. You know, if you're anything charismatic or Pentecostal, you want to rile the saints up because this is a celebration of life. This ain't no funeral. There should be, there should be, there should be. But let's take this out of the context of death and bring this into your everyday reality. Let's, let's go. All right? 1 Corinthians 15, we're going to start at verse number 50. He just gave it to me today. So we gonna see how this thing comes on out, right? "Now I tell you this, my brothers and sisters, flesh and blood are not able to inherit God's kingdom realm. And neither will that which is decaying be able to inherit what is corruptible." Lord Jesus, what are the things that are in your life that are decaying? What is the shelf life on some of your relationships? What's the shelf life on your places of comfortability? What's the shelf life of your excuses? I did a video years, probably a couple of months ago, and I was like, "Get those old seasonings out of your cabinet." Yeah, this ain't black man. This ain't, although it expired in 2019, we can still use that pepper. No. There is a shelf life that God has ordained to everything in your life. And the reality is, the reason that you are probably experiencing some of the things you are experiencing is because it has expired. How many times are you going to bang that seasoned salt before you realize you just got to go get some more? You're trying to break it up. It done got, it done congealed. You got syrup at the bottom of the garlic powder. That's because you ain't cooking because you Uber Eats that. That's for me. That was, that was for roughing, but you ended banging, you banging it up. You're trying to pull it out and sprinkle it up just so that you can preserve it when the reality is, you didn't use it when you... Let's, okay, let's keep going. Why you in the people's cabinet? All right? Let's keep going. All right? Verse 51, listen. "And I will tell you," calm down, Ruffin, "a divine mystery. Not all of us will die, but we will all be transformed. It will happen in an instant in the twinkling of his eye. For when the last trumpet is sounded, Lord Jesus, the dead will come back to life. We will be indestructible and we will be transformed, Lord. For we will discard our mortal clothes..." I want you to pay attention to the word "clothes," all right? "...and slip into a body that is imperishable. For what is mortal now will be exchanged for immortality. And when that which is mortal puts on immortality..." Reading out of the Passion Translation, y'all know this. "...and what now decays is exchanged for what will never decay. Then the scripture will be fulfilled that says, 'Death is swallowed up by a triumphant victory.'" So death, tell me, where is your victory? Tell me, death, where is your sting? Let's pause right there. Let's pause right there. Right? Now, now, when the Lord began to talk to me about this, he started talking to me about jars, right? I started seeing jars, right? And this jar, this is the jar used to have some pins in, but I've condensed them. But this jar is going to be called death. Now, what I need you to understand from this day forward, Lord Jesus, is that whenever you see the word "death," I want you to understand that death is synonymous with victory. Woo! All right? Death is synonymous with victory. They are partners. They go hand in hand. And so the Lord began to show me and he began to talk to me about these jars, about these jars, about these jars. And I said, "Lord, what are you showing me?" He said, "Justin, I need you to understand that we have actually not been responding to death the way we should." Right? Typically, when something or someone dies, what we do, we go to crying, we go to moping. I'm gonna miss you. Rest in peace, sleep in peace, live in peace, love in peace, sip, hip, lip, hip, dip, all of the things. Whatever it is, you go to putting it because that's, they sleep in love, rest, it's a lot of them acronyms going on out here in the Holy Ghost. But the Lord began to say to me, he said, "Justin, I need you to understand that death, Lord Jesus, is actually, yes, we know it's a part of life, but it should become a more constant part of your life, a more recognized part of your life." Yep, you see where I'm going. It should become a more recognized part of your life. Why? Because it says, it says right here in verse number, verse number 54, "And when that which is mortal puts on immortality and what now decays is exchanged for what will never decay, then the scripture will be fulfilled that says, 'Death is swallowed up by a triumphant victory.'" So if this jar called death is your life, I want you to think about the challenges that you experience on a daily basis or the challenges that you might be experiencing right now. And I need you to understand that when they enter the jar, it's automatically counted as a victory. The jar is called death, but it's also called victory. It's been swallowed up. Right? It's been overtaken. So here's the reality. It doesn't matter what I put in this jar. Do me a favor. If you're watching online, I want you to throw out some things that you or somebody you know is dealing with. I want you to just throw something out there. Just want you to, just humor me for a moment, right? Right? If you're on Zoom, go ahead and do it. If you're on Facebook Live, just put something in the chat, something that you might be dealing with. Hey, Nate, good to see you. Hey, Urban, what's the journey? Good to see you. Go ahead and just throw something out there, right? Burnout. When you submit and surrender your burnout and you allow it to die, Lord Jesus, it automatically becomes victory. Now, the challenge becomes is that some of these things we wear as badges of honor because they bring us recognition. "O child, I'm so burnt out." And so then people start talking to you about why you're burnt out and what you can do to not be burnt out and how you can challenge and change that. Nobody ever gives a remedy to the person who says, "I'm walking in the peace and in the strength of the Lord." So we've got to submit to burnout. We've got to submit the depression, right? Loneliness, the flashbacks and whatever it is, right, that finds its way into this jar, loses its name and we find victory over it. The problem is, or the challenge is that sometimes we don't want these things to die because we have a poor concept of death. I believe that to a degree, that many of the things and the people and the places and situations that we have been trying to coach ourselves to grieve about, we should actually be commanding ourselves to praise about. Right? This is a home-going celebration. This is the time where we get to recognize that I used to be lonely, but I'm not anymore. And from there should come victory. Because you know what loneliness says? It says that I might be wanting or needing someone or something, but it also means that what is negative and who is negative is no longer in my life. So I would take loneliness and praise him before I'll be full of people and accompanied and still be miserable. But we don't see death, right? So we're trying to, I've got to grieve that relationship. And the reality is, much of what you're grieving, you didn't like anyway. Woo! Much of what you're grieving didn't serve you anyway. Much of what you're grieving and who you're grieving could not help you get to or function in the place of purpose anyway. So you're grieving what you never should have had. Because if we're honest, we gonna be honest tonight, if we're honest, many of the people in our lives that we are finding ourselves grieving were people we knew wasn't no good for us in the first place. You could talk about all of the stuff they did wrong and all the stuff they did bad. I had a conversation with one of my friends the other day. And I said, "I'm confused about this whole friendship because out of the four years I've known you, you've never once said any good thing to me about this person." I'm confused that why you confused. Are you okay? Why, why are you...? I said, "No, wait." Because of one plus one is two. And then two plus two is four. Why are you still here? And the following day, everything was great. I said, "You know what? You gotta, you gotta put that in the jar." But the reality is, you won't be able to put it in the jar if you don't recognize that death is a part of life and it's a beautiful part of life. What do we always say when, when we know that the saints go, you know, when we know what somebody say, "Oh, I don't have to, you know, I don't have to worry because I know that they met Jesus in peace." Can you say the same thing about your own struggles? I know that that met Jesus in peace. Oh, yeah. Why? Because I'm surrendering it to him. I know that my loneliness met Jesus in peace. I know that my stress met Jesus in peace. We going back to the word. I know it met Jesus in peace. Now, 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 here is the beautiful thing about... Hey, Rachel, hey, Prophet Shante, good to see you. The beautiful thing about, about this is says that, listen, here is a divine mystery. Not all of us will die, but we will all be transformed. The reality is, the Lord said this to me a couple of weeks ago. He said, "Justin, I need you to, to understand something is that for years, people have said that process was a cuss word in the church." Right? We've all heard this. People don't want to be processed and process is a cuss word and, and so on and so forth. The Lord said, "Justin," he said, "I want you to understand that process has never been a cuss word to my people." Practicality has. Because I'm willing to follow the process as long as it's practical, as long as it makes sense when I'm doing it, as long as it makes sense when I'm trying to walk this thing out. Most of us will tell you, "I've never been upset with the process. I've never been challenged by the process. I've been challenged by the lack of practicality." But why do I say that? Because the reality is that many of us are trying to die when God is asking us to transform. Three Hebrew boys, let's talk, let's talk through the word. They were willing to go into the fiery furnace believing that it's going to be one of two options, either he gonna deliver us or he not. But what happened? In order for them to, to see God's deliverance, they had to go deeper into the furnace. Right? They had to go deeper into so that they could do what become transformed. And the transformation did not take place in their physical. It took place in their spirit. And so when we start talking about not all of us are going to die, what? Because there are some people who will choose to die in the process of transformation. There are some people that will choose to just accept the status quo during the time and in the season of transformation. But then there are some right here in this earth, right? They die in religion. They die in tradition. They die in what is comfortable. They die in disobedience. But then the Lord says, "Not all of us will die," right? "But we will all be transformed." Transformed into what? Into the image and the likeness of God? Or we will be transformed into the image and likeness of the devil because if he becomes our father, then we begin to look like him. Why? Because you look like the one that you serve. You echo and you speak after the one that you serve. So you may not die completely, but we will all be transformed. And here is the thing that happens with transformation. It happens in an instant and in the twinkling of his eye. There are many of us that have become more mature, right? We have learned and we have grown. And if we're honest, we don't remember the day, the hour, or the time that it happened. I don't remember the day, the time or the hour that I went crazy. I just know I woke up and I was crazy. That the stuff that I used to do, even as it relates to church teachings that I used to subscribe to and teach and preach with passion and fire, I don't, I don't hold them anymore. I don't know when, I don't know how, but what I do know is that I was transformed. Why? Because the power of revelation comes to transform you. Now, when the revelation comes, you have two choices. Either you accept it and receive it and become what you see and hear, or you reject it and stay where you are. Many people are dying not because they're in places that are void of power, not because they're in places where the word is not being preached, but because when the light of revelation comes, they choose to live in the dark. So preaching and teaching is going on, but they choose to live in the dark. Impartation is being given, but they choose to live in the dark. The Lord is speaking to them about what it is he wants them to do, but they're waiting on the confirmation of a man. And if they don't give it, they choose to live in the dark. That was intentional. But it says, "We will all be transformed." Here we go. Here we go. "In the instant, happened in an instant and a twinkling of his eye. For when the last trumpet is sounded, the dead will come back to life." Now, 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 we're talking about this not from the perspective of physical death. All right? But the things that you have died to, when you shed those things off, there is another version of you that comes to life. Woo! Jesus, that there is a version of you that cannot emerge until old revelation is shed from you, until old teachings are shed off of you, until old ways and old mindsets and mentalities are broken off of you, then and only then can that new version of you emerge. It looks like Abraham being in this place where he believed that he has to sacrifice his only son only to recognize at the very last moment that God provided a ram in the bush. And now Abraham's revelation is different because he says, "God will provide." Right? It looks like Daniel and the lions then believing that maybe he has just met his match. Maybe he is going to meet his maker. But it is then when Daniel goes into the lion's den and goes to sleep snoring and drooling and all of the things and wakes up the next day that he can say, "I serve the God that will close the mouth of the lion." It is the experience that we have with God, right? That allows false mentalities or old mentalities to die and then allows us to live in a new way. "For when the last trumpet is sounded..." Now, when we understand the power of trumpets, when we understand the purpose of trumpets, what we have to understand is that trumpets are symbolic of judgment. And when we start talking about judgment, we're not talking about the final day. We are talking about God's measurement, Jesus. We're talking about God's assessment and God's evaluation. Woo! So when it says that Job, when it talks about us not being able to judge a thing before its time, what we're saying is, "I can't, Jesus, I cannot measure the fruit of a tree as good or bad before the harvest time of that fruit." I can't, Lord Jesus, I can't look at someone who has just gotten saved and may still be struggling and wrestling with the will of God and say they'll never do it because they just got saved. The fullness of time has not yet come. I know it'll be horse after this. So it says, "We will be," as we transform and God releases the judgments and the assessments and we stand, exactly, that's why we are not the harvesters, but we stand under his measurement and we adjust and we do what it is he is asking us to do. Then it says, then it says, "We will be indestructible and we will be transformed." Can I tell you that God is making you indestructible? Woo! Can I tell you that the reason that God is filling, filling your jar with the stuff he's filling it with? I'm gonna just throw some stuff in here. It's so that, it's so that when you show up in certain places that you've got something to pull from, Lord Jesus, that you've got something that you can testify about, that you've got something that you can offer to someone else. Why? So that men might believe. Can I tell you that the purpose of this jar ain't just to look good? To the naked eye, this just looks like a jar. Woo! But to the spiritual eye, this looks like my life experience with God. This looks like my history, or Randall Abahande, I done felt him. This looks like my testimony. This looks like every time God has delivered me. Woo! This looks like every time God healed me. This look like every time God opened a door or made away from me. All you see is the jar. Woo! All you see is the victory, but you don't know what it is that I cried over in this jar. All you see is the victory, but you don't know the hell that I had to endure to put this in these things in this jar. You don't know what it is that I had to suffer through to fill this jar. And every day, woo, we were putting more things in the jar. Every day, every day, we're adding things to the jar so that when the time comes, they could say, "How did you get there?" God made me indestructible. Let's talk about some of the things we've got here in the jar. This is my favorite part. You ready? You ready? Well, there are some things on this journey of life that hit you right here. Right in the heart. Got a little tums for that though, right? Got a little tums for the heartburn of life. I know. We going somewhere. I promise you, it's gonna get good when it gets good, right? Some things you just, you just got to go through and then God will put a little salve and, and he'll work with you and he'll minister to you and he'll heal you up right through that heartburn. Got some of the AirPods, right? On this journey of life, as God is making you indestructible, woo! As God is filling up your jar, there got, there are going to be some things that only you can hear, right? There's going to be some words that are only for you. There's going to be some revelation and some dreams and some visions that will only make sense to you. And the reality is, he has given you that so that you know that I'm not done yet. He's giving you that word to coach you and encourage you to keep moving, to go both higher and deeper into. I know it don't feel good, but if you go through this, if you suffer with me, you will reign with me. I understand it don't feel good, but, but I need you to listen to what it is that... I understand it don't feel good, but, but I need you to listen to what it is that I've got to say. In, in, in my jar. In my jar. In this jar, there's, there's some things that God will highlight. You see this little office deep pot? The highlight, there are some things that God will highlight to you. There's some revelation that will make sense at a certain season. There are some things that won't click until you enter a certain place. And then when those things start to click, you'll start to find yourself walking in new levels of victory because of what it is God highlighted about you or even what he exposes and reveals about those around you, about your setting, about your environment, about your atmosphere. There's gonna be some things you just gonna have to jot down, got your little pen. You gonna have to take some notes for later. You gonna have to say, Lord, I'mma write this word down, but it don't make sense to me. And then five years later, he'll give you the next piece. And out of that comes a ministry and a business plan and so many other things, but you gotta write it down. And what's the name of this jar? Victory. But you know what happens? When you write down God's truth, you gotta speak death to every lie. Woo! God's truth that he gives you, it comes to combat the lies. What he highlights, you can focus on what has not been illuminated. Otherwise, you will miss it. Got a little sponge, little, little, little beauty blender. You know, we love a little piece of brown gravy over here with the stuff. Right? There are some things that God will have to even out. Right? Right? There are some things, right? When you start to reconcile, this is our favorite word here at the city. When you begin to reconcile God's account of your life versus your account of your life, there may be some things that you got to blend and even out. God, I didn't see that that way. God, my perception was off in that situation right there. I'm actually not a mistake, but I'm a purposeful tool in the hand of the Lord. I am loved and I am, wha- wha- whatever it is, God will balance and even those things out. Now, now, here is a bag of locks. They suitcase locks, alright? You probably can't see it. But every key in this bag don't have a lock. The lock is somewhere scattered about, but you know, there are some keys here that don't have locks. Why? There are certain things that God will allow you. Now, now, mind you, this is in the jar. I'mma, I'mma pull some of them out. I'mma pull some of them out. Right? Because in this lock, there is a key. Right? So if I turn it, it opens up, right? It ain't, it ain't locked no more. Key is inside. Now, there are some things within you that you don't yet know are there. Woo! Woo! So at the appointed time, God will unlock and reveal. This is why we can't limit prophets to only coming to confirm. Whoever told you that lied to you, that's not the only thing that prophets come to do. But I'mma leave that alone, cuz that's not why we're here. There is some revelation. There is some identity. There are some things that God will begin to unlock from within you. Certain things you don't need impartation to receive. You just need faith to believe because it's been there the entire time. That's, that's some of the locks. I'mma put this in the case while I lose it again. Alright? That's some of the locks. Now, on the other side of that, God, throughout the journey of your life, in some way, shape, or form, he will make you a key. We're talking about transformation. God will make you into a key. What does that mean, PJ? He will make you into a key. Why? So that as you encounter other people, you can act as the agent that helps to unlock mystery and revelation of who they are. I know, hey y'all, hey Raisel, good to see you. There are some people that come to Refuse City. God recently named our church his affirmation station. So you might come here just to worship. You might come here just to receive and fellowship. But when you come here, somebody with a key is gonna unlock God's greatness in you and you will leave that place never being the same. So he gives you keys, but then he makes you a key. Why? So that you can work the work of the one that has sent you. Alright? Let's keep going. Let's keep going. Alright? For we will discard our mortal clothes. This is verse 53. After we become indestructible, after we are transformed, we will discard our mortal clothes. That's all this little carnal stuff that's knocking you off your square. That really don't matter to nobody anyway. Woo! That's all of the stuff. Right? Uh, thi- this is chapstick. It's big, don't worry about it. All of the stuff that people have said about you. They put their mouths on you. You gotta get off those mortal clothes. I'm not gonna say it didn't impact you, but it shouldn't have a lasting impact. That was 20 years ago. Submit it to the Lord and let's keep growing. Submit it to God and let's go deeper. Submit it to God and let's grow up in this thing. And if you can submit your family members to the Lord, you ought to submit your triggers too. I'mma leave it alone. Huh? You're praying for God to heal your family? This is why those things keep coming to the surface. Why? Because you are a part of your own bloodline. Lord Jesus, there are many of you who know that you have been called to interrupt cycles in your bloodline, but you think that you are absent of that. No, 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 no. You are a part of the bloodline. So those things apply to you as well. That was a little tidbit. He done told me, girl. So discard your mortal clothes and slip into a body that is imperishable. Lord Jesus, discard the lies, discard the carnal things and slip into a body. Slip into the body of Christ. Slip into your asylum in eternity to the kingdom that cannot be destroyed. It will become imperishable. But in order to slip into that body, you've gotta take off your mortal clothes. You've gotta let go of carnal things. Why? Because what is mortal now will be exchanged for immortality. And when the, Lord Jesus, and when the same one that was bruised and offended, woo! When the same one that was stressed and burnt out, when the same one that was depressed and walked in fear, when those mortal things, Lord Jesus, when that, uh, mortal puts on immortality, what is now the verdict? What is now the declaration? I was depressed, but I walk in joy. I used to walk in fear, but now I walk in intention and in boldness. I used to walk in doubt, but now I walk in radical belief. When the mortal, Lord Jesus, puts on immortality, what now decays is exchanged for what will never decay. What is it that will never decay? The word of the Lord over your life, that you will be and do and become, that you will prosper, that you will be healed, that you will walk in victory that will never decay. Woo, Jesus! And the reality is that many of you are living in a place of molded manner because you will not exchange what is mortal for what is immortal. I ain't got no piece of water inside. You have chosen to live and to feast on what is im- what, what is mortal when God is trying to transform you and live you, uh, live you in a place of immortality. You can't, you can't eat Skittles all day, every day. Gonna cause your teeth to decay. You won't be able to properly digest what it is you, you ingest. You won't be able to do that. This is what it looks like to eat mortality. There's no nourishment, Lord Jesus. There's no nutritional value here. You've got to change your diet if you're going to live out of the jar called victory. And every time the enemy begins to say something to you, rather than crying and complaining, you ought to reach in your jar. I want you to type that in the comments. I want you to just type, uh, 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 reach in my jar. Put your name in there and say, Justin, reach in your jar. Kim, reach in your jar. Raisel, reach in your jar whenever you are challenged with mortal things. The remedy is not to give in. It is to reach into your jar. Okay? And when that which is mortal puts on immortality and what now decays is exchanged for what will never decay, then the scriptures will be fulfilled that says, death, the death of that immature version of me. Woo! The death of the version of me that was a liar and a trickster. Come on, talk to me, Jacob. The death of the virgin of me that did not know that God could deliver. The death of the virgin of me that did not believe that God was sovereign. The death of the version of me that would not submit and surrender to the will of the Lord. That, death swallowed that up by a triumphant victory. Because when the liar and the trickster died, Lord Jesus, the truth teller and the righteous one could emerge. When the one that had no faith died, then the faithful one could emerge. When the one that did not believe died, the one that believed emerged. So it is counted as a triumphant victory. So death, 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 uh, uh, the, the thing that just died, the version of me that just died. Tell me, where is your victory? Tell me, liar, where, where, where is the sting? I don't have to live with the sting of my lies, trying to figure out what I told this one and what I told that one. Why? Because I now walk in truth. Where is your victory? It's been swallowed up. Now, now, 56 says, it is sin that gives death its sting and the law that gives sin its power. Now, what we know is that sin, Lord Jesus, is what? Missing the mark. It is not actions alone. It is the actions that you do as a result of you choosing to miss the mark. Okay? So it is missing the mark that gives death its sting and the law that gives sin its power. The only reason that sin is a thing, right? Is because you chose to reside there. Sin, although we look at it and it looks like movement, sin actually looks like you staying still. It is, it is you being in a stagnant position, choosing not to go forward, choosing not to go deeper, choosing not to go higher. It's not just about you choosing to go back. Right? We love to make sin a backsliding thing. No, 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 no. You can stand still out of season and still be in sin. Okay? But we thank God. Woo! Verse number four, 57. But we thank God for giving us the victory as conquerors through our Lord Jesus Christ, the Anointed Ones. So now beloved ones, stand firm. Here we go. Stable and enduring. Live your lives, your new life. Live your lives with an unshakable confidence. Woo! We know that we prosper and excel in every season by serving the Lord because we are assured that our union relationship with the Lord makes our labor productive with fruit that endures. Now, now, the beautiful thing about this is that we don't get to this place of being a conqueror, of standing firm and stable and enduring and living our lives with unshakable confidence, knowing that our relationship with God makes our labor produce fruit that remains until we die and transform. When I begin to look at, I've got some, some concealer in here. Little concealer, right? Touche. Right? To cover up some of the things. Why? Because when you transform, woo! There's a, there's a washing, there, there's a, there's a covering, Lord Jesus. There's a concealing that the Lord does. Where the people will say, oh, you don't look like what you've been through. No, I don't. But baby, if you knew, huh? That if you knew that this, that this six one two something, uh, uh, a man, uh, several years ago had gotten down to about 150 pounds on life support, had to learn how to walk all over again and was on a, i- 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 if, if you didn't know that, you wouldn't know that. There's a concealing. Woo! Hallelujah to you, Jesus. Ha, 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 ha. And I'm glad you can't see it. There's a, what else we got in here? We got a little lip oil. He anoints my mouth so I can say the right thing when I talk to people. I need a little oil. We need the oil, the oil, love the love. So you can talk right. So you can respond right, not just to people, but also to the Lord. When he says, and you be like, whoa, 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 wait, how we? No, you've gotta have your lips consecrated and submitted to the Lord. What else we got? Got in here? I got a, got a little contact in here. Put it in your eyes so you can see straight. This is my right eye. I got a little stigmatism. It's a little different. Right? But you've gotta put, you've gotta be able to put on new lenses and see the word of the Lord the right way. Why? Because he says, my ways are not your ways. Neither are my thoughts your thoughts. You gotta put on the mind of Christ so that you can look through the eyes of Christ. That's an invitation to come up. That's an invitation to exchange your carnal mind for the mind of the Lord. And so his question tonight is, are you willing to accept my invitation? Not just to think like me, but to see as I see. Woo! Not just other people, but you first. I'mma leave it right there, cuz that's not what we here to do. I got some, some toner. Little something in here for your skin. He will beautify the meek with salvation. Hey! He will make you beautiful. I know, I got a little scripture in my belly tonight. Hallelujah to you. That little 15 minutes worked, huh? Glory to you, Jesus. But he will beautify you and he will make the things that are open, right? Cuz this is to, to, uh, decrease the look of pores and all of that. But he will fill those empty and open spaces with his power and with his spirit. Yes, he will. What else we got in here? We got a little nail clipper. Because here is the reality. Much of the attack against us is not from other people. It's from ourselves. You ever been scratching yourself and done broke your own skin? Yeah. It's time out for us to believe and start thinking about, well, they said, and they said, no, 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 no. Because the reality is, what they said wouldn't have as much power if you didn't believe it. If you didn't already believe that or think that about yourself, that seed would have never grown. The reason they called you ugly and you started believing you was ugly cuz you believed you was ugly before they said it. So he's gotta clip those nails. You gotta get the little manicure, pedicure. He got to go down and clip them so that you don't scratch and injure your own self. I did it the other day. I said, what is going on? Got to clip these things. The scratch, my arm all up. What, I got a little piece of bracelet down here. Here is the reality. There are some aspects of our life that must be. I don't need this bracelet. But I believe that when we begin to view death correctly, when we begin to look at the victories that we have been given, God then begins to give us things just because that there are graces and that there are gifts, that there are blessings that he gives just because we weren't asking for them, we weren't praying for them, we didn't need them. But he says, because you've been on this journey and you've been doing well, here you go. I got some other ones around here somewhere. I don't, I don't know where they at. But again, there's so many other things on this desk that I could really put out, but we ain't even gonna do that. But here is the reality. He said that this jar called victory is the jar of your life. But victory and death come hand in hand. Every time a portion of you dies, another part of you comes alive. Excuse me? Every time you shed something, something is gained. Every time you drop something, something is picked up. And one of the things I believe very strongly that God is asking us to do is stop crying over what was and recognize what is and what is to come. I'm so heartbroken and I'm so this and I'm so that. Yeah, but what was gained in that space? Woo! What was gained as a result of that? What did you gain when that relationship broke? What did you learn when you left that place? Sando rapandelebe. What did you get out of that place? One of the things I had to start doing years ago is stop seeing the churches that I used to belong to when the stuff wasn't all the way right. I had to stop seeing those as negative experiences. Why? Because I learned. Woo! Because I grew. Woo! Hallelujah! Because I was cultivated right through that. Bible says, "It was good that I was afflicted." Why? Because it was through and by that affliction that I learned of you. I learned, I learned through affliction. Woo! I learned through testing. I learned through trial and error, heavy on the error. Myself and that of others. I learned. I was sharing with someone yesterday, we having a conversation. I said, "One of the things that I have to remember or recognize is that, uh, there, there's a specific relationship in my life that set the standard for care for me, genuine care. And while I'm not trying to recreate that, if you don't meet this standard, you can't stay." And this is the standard of genuine love and care that didn't want to need anything, uh, uh, on the other side of it. They were just concerned and they could, that was it. Right? In our service several weeks ago, the Lord set a new standard of love. Woo! Yeah, he did, had us hugging. "I love myself, myself love me, we gonna be together forever." It was an amazing moment, but the Lord began to establish in us a new standard of self-love first. But here is the reality, that the new standard of self-love would not be effective and it would not be impactful if somewhere in this jar there wasn't poor treatment. Right? Right? If there were, if there weren't some things in the jar that we would otherwise not want to be a part of. Some stuff in the jar, right? Because again, we got some concealer in this jar. The reality is, I only need this if I've got things I want to hide. And so when that new standard was set, when we begin to live out of that place and from that jar, the Lord suggested, it's there, right? It's all there. Now, what I need you to understand is that you know what's in the jar. Yeah, you do. You know what's in the jar. Where my locks, can't find my locks. I done, I done shifted. And now here, that, that two things happening here, right? You know how we got there. You know what's in the jar. But when people look, all they see is victory. Now, here is the other reality. There are some times on the journey of our lives that God will allow us to stop and breathe and take assessment of what's in this jar. What you all don't see is that these locks are not in this jar. I've reconfigured this jar, so now we can't close, but the locks are not in there and they once were. And I didn't put anything extra in this jar other than what was in here the first time. Woo! Sometimes, as you are walking through this place in this journey of life, as you're walking through this place of victory, you're going to have to offload some things. Woo! There may come a season in your life where God won't use you to unlock anybody's anything because he wants you to focus on who he is. There's a person, there, there, there's a point that comes in your life where the words of people that came to sting and burn your heart, where you won't need those thumbs anymore, but you're still walking in victory. There comes a time and a season where you won't need God, where you won't always have to say, "Lord, anoint my lips," and Lord, 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 because you'll live in a way where you want to please him. So you won't have to pray, "Lord, anoint me one more time." You will walk in the anointing that he has given you. There'll come a day. There'll come a day where some of the stuff that you are carrying now, you won't need. It'll just settle to the bottom of your testimony jar. And every now and then, woo! There's an old song that says, "Roll back the curtains of memory now and then. Show me where I am and where I could have been." Maybe that make the words, I don't know, I don't remix it, it is what it is. But show me what I could have done, your account and show me mine, so that I can recognize just how far you have brought me from. Woo! Remind me of the times. I was, I was having a, just a little flashback the other day. And I remember when, when my mom at our former church, where she was the choir director, and I will watch my, listen, y'all, don't, don't do this at home, okay? Don't do it. We would be on our way to choir rehearsal, on our way to church or somewhere. We would be listening to music and the spirit of God would hit my mom in the car. And she would take them hands and go, "Hah, yada, da, 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 da." No, 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 no. Hands on the wheel. Hold it. Right? Woo! But what I begin to remember is that it was my mother's example of worship that set an example for me. And while I don't take my hands off the wheel, hey, when we get caught up in that place, it is over and done with. Listen. Cut it. It's a wrap. Why? There are things that have been a part of your making, that have been a part of your foundation and a part of your DNA that you will never forget. I used to play drums at my former church. I knew three beats, fast, slow and mid-tempo. That was it. I don't need it right now. Thank you, Jesus. Praise the Lord. But it was a part of my making. Why? So I recognize that whatever it is God wants to use from me, he can use me for it. I learned how to stay in the presence of God because our former pastor used to call us up there and say, "Justin, I want you to sing whatever, whatever song until I feel the anointing." Ma'am, what? Feel it. Please feel it and feel it quickly. Right? But she taught me how to live a consecrated life, how to live in the face and in the presence of the Lord. I know what it is. To, to spend hours in prayer. There was a woman at our church, I promise I'm getting ready to end here. There was a woman at our church. Hey Pastor Smith, good to see you. Hey, I'm Mel. Woman at our church named Ms. Myra. Baby, Ms. Myra was probably, uh, what, what's standing out to me is one of the first, uh, like true intercessors that I had ever encountered. Ms. Myra had a slightly high pitched voice, right? But when Ms. Myra would begin to pray, maybe that voice would, praying, declare, intercede, I mean, gone for hours. Gone for hours. I've had examples around me my entire life of some of the things that I am doing right now. What you see is PJ. He preaching, praying, prophesying, laying hands on folks, wiping the sweat of his brow on the folks and the people. Same grace, right? All of the things. Releasing the whirlwind of God over people, ain't that crazy? So that you become God's whirlwind and you blow it, you know, all of the things, right? But what you don't know is that in this jar, woo wee! There was a testimony and there was a history of God's salvation and God's deliverance. In this, in this jar, what I didn't put in here, this is what it's gonna represent. Y'all know I love a good pen in the pad. I got some stuff that I had, that I had done scribbled, but in this jar are some of the prayers, woo! That I have prayed. The prayers that you have prayed. The ones that you have declared that God has made good on, it's in your jar. In the jar called victory. But this jar called victory symbolizes death. Woo! Because there are some things, I encourage you from this day forward, if you don't make a practice of it, I want you, whenever you're going somewhere, somebody calls you out to give you a prophetic word, I want you to start recording it. And every now and then, I want you to begin, hey Prophet Holland, good to see you. I want you to begin to listen to the words that have been spoken over you. I did this several months ago and there were things that I could actually delete. Why? Because those things had already come to pass. There were so many words, I'm gonna be honest for a minute. There were so many words and people were telling me, "God's got a calling on your life and God wants you to surrender to the calling. He's calling you, he's calling, he's calling you." And I was like, "Oh my God, I don't want to hear that." But now God, God doesn't have to come and tell me that there's a calling on my life. Why? Because I've chosen to answer. If you would stop and look at those old journals and if you would stop and look at those and listen to those old recordings and those old videos, I would be interested to see if you find yourself beyond that place. And if not, I would be interested to know why. Right? Maybe some of those seasons of processing and practicality, God has extended. But there may be some of those seasons where you have just chosen not to heed the word of the Lord beyond the vessel that it came through, because that's a whole nother thing, but we gonna leave it there tonight. But it's a jar called victory. No one knows what's in this jar. Once I put that paper in here, when I shook it, it stopped moving as much. Because there are some things that God will fill your life with that will cause everything else to come together. You put a few more of these prayer papers in here and there may not be room for this other stuff to move around, but God will submit and bring these things, I believe, very, very, uh, with, with every part of my being that God wants to encourage you out of the place you're in and into another. But you must die and be willing to be transformed. Now, here is the reality. Transformation isn't always a physical thing. Sometimes it takes place in the heart. And when transformation takes place in the heart, the, the, the first place you hear it or take note of it is about what comes out of your mouth. Right? When your heart has been changed, your language follows right after. Why? Because out of the abundance of the heart, the mouth speaks. When that, when that word, when that heart changes, so does the declaration and the confession. There's a song that we would listen to, uh, called Royalty. And at the end she says, "What will you decree?" So what will you decree? Woo! There's a, there's a certain part of the song, I'm not gonna play it because we'll all be tore up. But she says, "I saw you as a little girl and I saw her putting these beautiful dresses on, saying mommy, daddy, look at me, look at the beautiful princess that I am." Then she's, uh, moves over and starts talking about how this young woman dressed well for the part. But then the Lord comes and says, "But now I'm gathering the pieces of your heart that have been scattered and I'm making it new. You went from this little child, this, this innocent child that was putting the pieces and, and wearing these things so that you could be seen, but then something along the way happened and the pieces of your heart were scattered. And the Lord went to gather them and make you new." And then he ends the song and says, "But what will you decree? What do you want to see?" The Lord has given us the awesome ability to declare out of our mouths what we want to see that lines up with his will. The reality is many of us are saying the wrong thing because we don't have the right revelation. Woo! And when you don't have the right revelation, you will always make the wrong declaration. So God wants to change the way that you see yourself. Had a conversation this past Saturday, uh, me and PJ too, uh, about the word beauty. And what we recognize by way of the definition is that beauty has nothing to do with the person. But it has everything to do with the person that's looking at the object or the person. So, so here is the reality. You are not, well, you are beautiful because you say you are, but just from the, uh, perspective of the definition, you are not beautiful because you say you're beautiful. You're beautiful because God says it and he is the one that sees you as such. Now, when you receive God's revelation of beauty based on what he sees about you, then you can declare that. So what will you decree? What do you want to see? There is, I, I want to read one more scripture. I promise you after this, we out of here. I'm about to be gone. I'm about to be gone. I'm about to be out of here. But there is something really, really powerful that I believe the Lord wants to speak to us. All right? And this is what it is. As we're talking about, uh, uh, all of these things, we start talking about this, this jar of victory. Right? We start talking about it. Let's go to 2 Corinthians, chapter four. And I promise you, after this, we gonna go ahead and give a little benediction and we gonna be out of here. All right? And we're gonna start reading at verse number 16. 2 Corinthians 4:16, again, Passion Translation. And it says, "So no wonder we don't give up. For even though our outer person gradually wears out, our inner being is being renewed every single day." Remember, we're taking off those mortal clothes. We're putting on what is immortal. We are being transformed. We view our slight, short-lived troubles in the light of eternity. Woo! Okay? First thing you gotta do after transformation is that you've gotta see everything you go through as slight and short-lived. Cancer, slight and short-lived. No money, slight and short-lived. I want somebody to type that in the comments, slight and short-lived. Whatever it is. However it comes, this is slight and short-lived. What does that translate to? I ought not break a sweat over this. Woo! I shouldn't be anywhere crying and mumbling and complaining. Why? Because I guarantee that for every slight, short-lived thing, there's something in my jar that tells me it won't be this way always. Hallelujah! All right, let's keep going before I get carried away. All right? We see our difficulties as the substance that produces for us an eternal, weighty glory far beyond all comparison. Because we don't focus our attention on what is seen, but on what is unseen. For what is seen is temporary, but the unseen realm is eternal. Death ain't got no power here. Why? Because there is something eternal that I'm working toward. Death ain't got no power here because that thing is slight and short-lived. I'm out of here. And I recognize that the reason I must go through this is because eternity is being born in and through me, Lord Jesus. The reason that I must endure is because something weighty and eternal is coming alive in me. The reason that I must endure so that I can take off that old mindset, I'm not gonna strip, but I've got to take off that old mindset. I've gotta take off those false realities so that I can become. Woo! So that I can receive from God the grace to become all that he said. But it doesn't come until I change my perspective, until I change my perception. It doesn't come until I die and choose to be transformed by the renewing of my mind. Hallelujah! That I may be the living proof, oranda la bahason de lebeke, that I may be the living proof of what is good and acceptable and perfect in the will of God. I must be transformed so that I can become the living proof. Woo! The reason that I've got this jar is because this jar is a symbol that I am the living proof, that the law could not keep me out. Woo! That the words of others could not keep me out, that the plan of the enemy could not keep me from becoming what God said. Right now, you are the living proof, orande lebehe. I gave my neighbors a good holler in a long time. I'm back and you're welcome. You are alive and you are the living proof of what is the good, acceptable and perfect will of God, no matter how imperfect your life has been. Woo! No matter how many people view your life and your calling as unacceptable. No matter how many people are struggling to see and find the good, you are the living proof that God's will is good, acceptable and perfect. And your jar is representative of that fact. Hallelujah to you, Jesus. I gotta go. I'm out of here. I'm out of here. I love y'all. This is it. You've got a jar called victory. When life happens, I'd want you to reach in your jar. Woo! I don't know if you need to get a physical jar and fill it with scripture. I don't know. I don't know how you need to remember this, but whatever it is, we love talking about what filled your bucket today? What fueled your jar? I'm filling my jar with the word of the Lord. Writing down visions and dreams, ota mansore de pandelebeke. I'm writing down what he deposited in my spirit. I'm writing down the vision that he gave me and I'm living from that reality. I must go deeper. Woo! I must go deeper. Sota mandelebeke son de la bahaa. Why? Because I'm just as safe in the cave as I am at the top of it. I'm just as secure in the valley, woo, as I am on the mountain. I'm just as secure in the valley as I am on the mountain. I'm just as secure in the valley of the shadow of death as I am in the place where the light is shining brightly. I am the living proof. Take on strength and know that you are the living proof. You are unshakable, and you don't have the right to shake, how dare you? I'd have turned into another man, how dare you be shaken when the eternal God lives inside of you? How dare you be shaken when your history says you cannot be defeated? How dare you be shaken when the prophecy says you win? Whatever the outcome is, whatever the outcome is, however it shakes, you win. How dare you? How dare you give up your right to an enemy that is not even eternal? How dare you sacrifice what has been laid up for you and render it as worthless? How dare you? Choose to cry, when all you gotta do is reach in your jar, how dare you? The power of an unshakable kingdom lives within you. I dare you, the next time you are confronted with an issue, to pull on the power of the unshakable kingdom within and use that as a weapon against the enemy, and say, "How dare you play in my faith?" As if I don't know who I am. I gotta go, I gotta go, I love y'all, I'm outta here, I'm outta here. This your midnight push, before midnight. So that when midnight comes, you can pray and sing praises unto God. Regardless of what's going on, you can declare that God is good. Alright, I gotta go, I love y'all, and I love Jesus. Y'all have an amazing rest of your Thursday. Meet us down here same time next week. We probably gonna try to get back to the parables, I don't know. But we will be led of the Lord, how dare you? I want you to pick yourself up out of the place that you chose to lay it and recognize, I don't have the right to be here. I don't care if the cart was approved, I don't care if you got the confirmation number, I don't care if they gave you an extra accommodation and gave you an early check-in and a late checkout, you don't belong there. You've gotta get up and go. Eat and run. Come on, eat and run. Come out of that cave, eat and run. And be nourished by the supernatural manner of the Lord. No, I'm not prophesying to you, you've got enough prophecy in your jar that you can get up and run on and see what the end will be. You've got enough prophecy in your jar. You've got enough vision on the inside of you to keep going until what you see matches what you see. Let's grow up. Focus, Ruffin. I love y'all, Father, we thank you for your word. We give you praise, for you are good. I thank you for feeding us and for reminding us of what is in our jar. How dare you make his sacrifice of null effect? How dare you discard willingly the victory that he died to give you, to gift you, as you are a gift? Father, from this day forward, first, we repent. That's it. For choosing to run when we should have been reaching. You chose to run when you should have been reaching. They told me that I won't be anything, but I know there's something in my jar that says otherwise. They start bringing up my past, but I know that God even those things out for me. Why am I still tripping? They trying to show me the scars, but I wear the scars well. And, and there are some things that God covered, but then there are other things that he allowed to stay visible, so that they would know that he is a God that delivers and heals. But, but this is what they're saying, and they said that it won't happen, but I remember the day that the Lord gave me the word, and I wrote it down, and I am holding on to the promise. How dare you run when all you had to do was reach? I don't know if I'm ever gonna come out of this place. How dare you run when he gave you the power to reach? As a matter of fact, you've been waiting for the appointed time to come, and the Lord has said, "The door has been opened, all you gotta do is walk out." You've been trying to wait for the right time, so that you could escape and leave without the fear of retaliation. The Lord says, "I dealt with that long ago, I'm waiting for you to open up the door." Y'all know I love a good movie, Cinderella with Brandy. She was talking, and the fairy godmother said, "Cinderella, ain't nobody stopping you but you." The music is in you, and when you find it, ain't nobody gonna be able to stop you from walking out that door. But you gotta reach inside of you. I gave you a dress, but he fell in love with your heart. They came to cherish the anointing, not what you had on. Justin, why are you here? I don't know. Father, we love you. And we give you praise. He was in love when you were in the rags. Jesus loved you in the rags. Oh, Jesus, the song of the market says, "Do I love you because you're wonderful, or are you wonderful because I love you?" I don't know, all I know is that you are wonderful. I look at you, and I am full of wonder. I don't know if my wonder is leading to my love, or if my love is leading to my wonder, and I'm not even trying to figure it out. Why? Because my beloved is the most beautiful, hallelujah, amongst thousands and thousands. I'ma leave it alone, because we will get caught up right through here. But here is what I need you to understand. Let's just go on and do it one time, as we close out. I'm gonna try to pray one more time. That it's in your jar, it's in your jar. We just there. It's in your jar. And he says, this is what he said to us several weeks ago. He says, "That this is not just a song that I want you to sing to me, this is the song that I sing to you about you, that you are my beloved, and you are the most beautiful among thousands and thousands." Yes, you are. And he said, "My name is your affirmation." Here is what I declare, this is gonna be our closing prayer, Refuge City, we'll check in later. Because if I don't stop, I won't stop. He said it like this. "Yes, my name is your affirmation." And I declare that God is branding his name over you. Let the name Yahshua be branded over your hearts and on your spirits forevermore. Let the name Yahshua be branded in you for eternity, so that whenever the enemy begins to speak, let the word of the Lord come up that says, "Yes, you are what I said, not what he said." Because the enemy will come to tell you what you are not. But the word of the Lord is, "Yes, you are," and he finishes the sentence, "Father, I do decree and declare over these your people." That they are walking into a season where you are finishing the sentence. I declare that there would be no more fill in the blanks. I thank you, Father, that you are erasing words that have been spoken by carnal people, that you are erasing words that have been written by those that had perverse pens. Let us be affirmed by your pen, let us be affirmed by your word. Let us be affirmed by your declaration and your declaration alone. I thank you, Father, that what it is that you have said is what it is we are going to see, and we will not settle for a lesser reality. I feel that, that there are some of you, I gotta do this a little more often, that there are some of you that are settling for a reality that is less than what you've seen, because this is easier to obtain. But he says, "I didn't call you to the easy." I called you to the eternal. I did not call you to what was easy, I called you to what was eternal. And according to the word of the Lord, it says that our slight, short-lived troubles produce the substance for what is eternal. I need you to understand that every time you go through something, and everything you do go through, you are putting a deposit on eternity. Eternity is being born and formed in you. And so, Father, we decree and declare that we are no longer settling for what is easy, that we are no longer accepting what is easy, but that we are willing to wait for what is eternal, because we know that you will release eternal in this temporal realm. Let the reality of eternity fall on us in earth, in the name of Jesus. Perfect health, as we partner with you. Clean bills of health and record, as we partner with you. I thank you for it, that we will see what you said. That we will no longer find ourselves just doing a Daniel fast, but that we will be living a Daniel life, not just in food, but in dedication and in consecration. I thank you for it, in the name of Jesus, that you are adjusting our physical, our emotional, our spiritual diet, so that we can mirror you. I thank you, Father, that Christ is being formed in us, and that it takes our participation. I thank you for it. In the name of the Lord Jesus, we bless you, and we give you glory. Now, Father, we love you, and we thank you for what you have said. Keep ministering to us from this place. Remind us of what is in our jar. Remind us of what you have done for us and in us and through us up to this point that has been intended to make us and shape us so that men might believe, "Oh yeah, I hear you," and so that we might become. I thank you for what you are doing, and I thank you that you're doing it, so that men might believe, and so that we might become. And if we don't become, they have nothing to believe in. So thank you for helping us become belief. That we become the manner of belief for the unbeliever and the believer alike. I thank you. That we will not just be living epistles that can be read of men, but that we will be living manner that men can take and nourish and feast on and find strength for their journey. I thank you for it. I gotta go, I love y'all, I'll see y'all Sunday. PJ 2 was preaching out. We'll get the information in our group chat, go in the Strength of the Lord, I'll be there. But we gonna go on and do what we do as Refuge City. And those of you all who are not gonna be there, we'll try to go live and do all the things. And if you can't meet us on Sunday, meet us right here next week, Thursday, at seven. We gonna be on time, I'ma be on time in the Holy Ghost of God. I love y'all. Become, and remember to reach in your jar, I love you, bye-bye.